Okay.
The hard way.
All right, we'll give Michael a second to sign in and we can do the pledge. All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Lewisburg Area Board of School Directors. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the American public. One of my students. All right, welcome guests. The board met an executive session for about thirty minutes before this evening's meeting to talk about personnel matters and other items. And this evening, Mr. Speckler was excused and Dr. Maris is excused and Dr. Grant will join us momentarily. Okay, our first item is any citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. Do we have any online or helping audience? All right, so I would like to hear about the CSI U Nest program if you're ready to go. Welcome.
Buddy.
Yeah, how the mic helps for the Zoom.
See, we're good. I have to readjust for.
Yeah, do you want to get a chair?
I should do. So, my name is Dr. Sam Faulkner. I'm a pediatric psychologist. I previously worked for the hospital for most of my career. Now I'm at the CSI U. I'll tell you just a smidge about me, but mostly I want to focus on the clinic. Most of my career has been in acute setting, so I worked in the emergency department and Janet Weiss Children's Hospital. And then I ran, I developed and operated in an acute psychiatric clinic. So caring for really the most vulnerable kids in our communities, those experiencing psychiatric crisis, suicidality, homicidal- homicidality, psychosis. And I am also, so I'm a licensed psychologist, but I'm also a nationally certified school psychologist. Hence my interest in working for an educational agency. So my background, most of my career has been in a hospital setting, but I do have training in school psych. So I would say I sort of see the transition of my career going from kind of the most acute to not least acute, but less acute over time. The Nest Clinic is a OMSA, so state licensed psychiatric outpatient clinic. We got our license from the state. Would have been a couple of weeks ago now. Nest stands for nurturing environments for support and treatment. That's very intentional because I believe that my objective as the director of the clinic and as a provider are to foster nurturing environments in my clinic, nurturing environments in the therapy room, as well as in all the other spaces that we serve. So we have, if you ever make it down to the CSI U, well, I'll find a way to give you a tour. We're almost completely set up. We've got furniture. We've got fresh paint on the walls. We have several rooms specifically dedicated for therapy rooms. The, my, I'll tell you a little bit about our vision. So the Nest Clinic psychiatric outpatient clinic, we plan on providing individual therapy, psychological psychiatric evaluations, individual therapy, group therapy, as well as other services and supports. The objective is for us to have a hub at the CSI U. So in Montandon, we'll have our clinic, the Nest Clinic will have a hub there. But very quickly, and in fact, it's sort of already, we've already gotten the ball rolling. The purpose of the clinic is to help build a truly integrated school mental health model. So the reason that we decided to go the route of, the painstaking route of getting licensed with the state is because once we have that license, which we do, it is relatively straightforward for us to establish satellite clinic sites in the local school districts. So this is something I was, I worked on when I was at the hospital, but frankly, it's it's challenging. Hospital and school systems are very different. And so an education system or a hospital system mapping onto an education system was certain, was a challenge. But in this position, because of the relationship that the CSI U has with all the districts in the region, I think we're much better positioned to bring this to life. And we've had many initial conversations and are actually working towards a formal agreement with at least one school district to be our first satellite clinic site. So why does that matter? For many reasons. When I left the hospital, I think we were anywhere from eighteen to twenty-one thousand folks on the waitlist. I know, just take that, let that sink in for a little bit. Now, not all of those are children, to be clear, but it gives you a sense of the sort of the impact that mental health and the lack of access to care has on our communities. Anybody who has worked in schools, who works with children, administrators, school board, you guys are well aware, the, a youth mental health crisis is not an exaggeration. It's not something propped up by the media. This is a real thing. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, the Children's Hospital Association, all of them have come together and said, this is a crisis, right? This is an epidemic. And so this is part of the, there's many reasons why that is happening. We have the onset of social media, the access to technology, information around the world. The pandemic, and I will say this, these trends have been happening for decades. And as, as most things, what the pandemic did was put it in a hyperdrive. And so although we've been heading this direction in a while, pandemic really exacerbated, I think, the underlying trend of us not appropriately dealing with the mental health of our students and children and families. So for me, when I say integrated school mental health, at the IU, we have a behavioral health department. So I am very much the, going to be the clinical side of mental behavioral health. My colleague Julie Petron, some of you may know, is the educational side of behavioral health. We are, we are a dyad on purpose because these are, these systems have to work together. So what Julie's team has done really well over the past couple of years is they've worked on, working directly with school districts on building up their MPSS, their SEL, or PBIS, helping build the systems and the teams that are required. The beauty of MPSS is its population health. It's just a population health model. And so for me, I envision a future for us where we are in a school district and we have educational consultants supporting the schools to support themselves in these systems. And we have a kid who walks, who passes, may pass through MPSS evidence-based progress monitoring system. And I, people on my team are aware at some level that this child is passing through. Maybe they need some more intensive supports. If they're, if they're not thriving with a small group or a targeted intervention, then they might end up with us, right, on the clinical side. That's the purpose of MPSS. Not saying that you can't sort of pass go, right? If you've got a child who has thoughts of death or dying, we're not going to say, have your tier two group today. No, they're going to need to come see me. And so we'll have ways to do that, but that, that's the vision, is to really build out a truly integrated mental health system of support. So the other pieces, I will say, coming from a hospital, being faculty at the, at the School of Medicine, training, teaching, these things are absolutely integral to what we do, both for the development of the future workforce, but also for ongoing honing of the skills of our professionals. One of the things that we have done is we have, we are, we've applied to be, and it's a matter of time, will be pre-approved provider for continuing education. One of the things that CSI U does well, I think, is professional development. But they, at this, before we applied for this, they could not provide clinical professional development for licensed social workers, licensed clinical social workers, licensed professional counselors, licensed marriage and family therapists. That's what my clinic is going to do. For one, because we're going to be learning all, every, every week. We're going to have grand rounds. But why not also make that something that our clinicians, who are in the school district, even in the community, could benefit from and get credits towards their license? The other big thing I would say, beyond professional development, continuing education, I think that we have to find ways, like I've said before, we have to find ways to become integrated providers in our community. From the CSI U, I think the best way to do that is partnership with our local school districts and our satellite sites. I don't think that it stops there. The, the challenge is too big for us to not be able to work together. So referral pathways, not just from, from a school district, but from children and youth, from, from Geisinger, from juvenile probation and parole. We have to have, I don't know if tendrils is the right word, but we do. We have to have a touch point in all the spaces where mental health issues may arise. It's the, it's what I started to do on the crisis side of things with the Bridge Clinic. And I think it's what we can do as a comprehensive system on, with the Nest Clinic. One clarifying detail, we are a psychiatric outpatient clinic, so we will have access to prescribers, but I will, I would caution, I'll caution two things. One, we'll have maybe about a day a week. So not a huge amount of access for medication management. I mean, the good news is the overwhelming empirical evidence for treating youth mental health is in favor of psychological behavioral interventions, certainly under twelve. You are going to, we're going to be focusing mostly on family psychological behavioral interventions. But of course, there's going to be significant psychiatric issues that require medication management, so we will have that a little bit. The other thing is, I, I don't want to, I don't want to give the impression that our, on our anticipated go-live date, which is September fifteenth, we're going to be able to take care of all the kids everywhere. We're, we're a small shop and we're just getting started. I believe we have the right model to meet mental health needs, and I certainly have the, the passion to try to bring it to life. But I don't have twenty clinicians at my disposal. So we, we do just, I just want to be careful to moderate that message. I think it is very important, and I think this work is, I think we're going to bring this to life, but like I said, that can't carry a five hundred person caseload day one. So I would love to answer questions from anyone.
Does this model exist in any other IU's or is there any other precedent for what you're trying to do?
As, as far as I'm aware, it is not a model in other IU's. But as any good idea or methodology, I stole parts of this from someone who did it first. The, the place that I first saw this work was actually in, I can't remember if it was, it was Denver, I'm not sure where the county is, but the public schools in Denver. And I actually saw them present twice, once at the National Association of School Psychologists and once at the American Psychological Association last week. They did essentially this model where they had educational consultants supporting social emotional learning, PBIS, building up the tiers in the MPSS systems and this. But they were also, they also had clinicians installed in the school districts. And the part that I loved about it, which is the part that I am going to replicate, is that these individuals were cross-trained. So some, what I, what I've seen with school-based services in the past is you have a clinician who essentially is plugged into a school district and they are co-located. They don't even, they, what, they don't even know what MPSS is. They've never heard that. They probably heard that in the hallways, but they're like, that sounds like something I should know about. But they're not necessarily trained in that. And vice versa, you have educational consultants or, you know, emotional support teachers who don't really understand anything on the clinical realm. And so for me, it is important that my team will be cross-trained in both the clinical, understanding psychopathology, diagnosis and treatment, but also understanding school systems and school structures. What is SEL? What does evidence-based programming look like? What does progress monitoring even mean? So that we can, so that my, our teams can speak the same language when we're serving children and families. So I stole some of it from Denver, from the Denver model.
So we're a school board. We only have a couple of roles that we get to do. Select a superintendent, approve budgets and set policy.
Yep.
Is there any advice or suggestion you would give on policies you've seen be effective in helping have sort of better mental health of children in schools? You can take that one home if you want to.
So I am, I'm on the school board at, in Danville. And I'll say one of the policies I was a part of. This is not, this is sort of, this is not, I don't know if it's necessarily systemic policy, but one of the things I participated in when I was there was essentially rewriting the suicide prevention and training policy to, so there's a minute, the way that, and I don't, I haven't looked at your policy, but most of, most school board policies are since, are basically, here's the PDE, plug it into the, your, right. And from my perspective, although there was, it was somewhat progressive in the fact that they were requiring training of everyone, it was not enough. Because suicide is the second leading cause of death in children's ages ten to fourteen. And although, actually ten to twenty-five. So this is not, and I, I find, most people find that shocking when they hear that, but it is the truth. This is the, this is the thing, this is the second most important thing that we should be worried about when we're thinking about our children's safety. And this is not like a fear mongering thing. I mean, it just is the reality. And that trend has steadily, over the past twenty years, right, it's gone from sixth to fourth to third to now we're at the number two. And so from my point of view, if you've got the second leading cause of death, everybody in your building better know, at least have an idea of what to do when it shows up. Right? It doesn't mean that everybody needs to do a comprehensive safety risk evaluation and, but they better at least have some idea that this thing exists, that it's very real and that it's very dangerous and what to do next. So for me, I sort of, that was my impact on policy. I ramped up the requirements for all staff to be trained and also made, I can't remember the exact details, but, but essentially increased the frequency that was required for training. So that's one thing.
Okay. I will say something we have in the district that is not strictly a policy, but it is something we practice is that we study the book How Children Succeed. Every child should have one adult that they really feel that they can go to.
Yep.
And so is that still a best practice or is there a training for those folks? Should they know more about what it means to have a kid engaged? So that when there's those few kids that no one puts their name next to, we know what to do.
So it absolutely is best practice. One of the, one of the things that I always talk about, because I do suicide prevention trainings, one of the things that I talk about, particularly if I have educators in the room, is that the likelihood that a student dies by suicide, if they have a single meaningful connection at a school building, is significantly lower. It saves kids' lives, and that's not, I'm not being dramatic. Like it, I don't know what the exact statistics are, but it is a significant relationship if they have one. And you guys know this, folks in education, you sometimes are the person that this child has, the only person that they have, that they have. And if they, we just, and I, I'll say that because I just, I've seen it so many times. And it, another thing that parents, parents and educators, it sort of blows our mind, but it's like, you, you could, I don't want to put too much pressure, but you could save a kid's life, you know what I mean? Like just by helping them feel connected and engaged at school. One of the most helpful, I would say, general trainings, and you guys, your staff may have gotten this, is QPR. Have you heard of that? Yeah. I think that's a good one, right? That's question, persuade, refer. It's a, it's a great keeping training. It is not, it does not require you to provide a comprehensive evaluation. It just is, like I said before, it's almost sort of like a triage. It teaches people how to respond effectively and then kind of what to do next.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? I can assure you that we're all very interested. We talk about this a lot as a board, so thank you very much.
Well, it's my pleasure and I'm happy to, if folks have other questions, or I know my email's over there, but you can also find me on the CSI U. And if you guys are interested in talking anymore about kind of what's next to come for us, please reach out. I'm happy to discuss it. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I might step out, is that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vince, what would you like to add? It's a shame that Justin wasn't here.
I have a question. Like right up his ass.
Wanted to give a mental health through the services update with our providers, partners that we have. This past year, we added a new one in February, so let me tell you some numbers on, on that, how we partnered with them. So one of them was Concern, which was our in-person counseling. We had twenty-four referrals and the eight K students were served, served over the last two years after late. And Concern does a lot of in-person counseling as well, BHP services as well. So that's used a lot at Kelly Elementary. But we saw that they're having challenges with their clinicians, so it was a challenge there to have a referral to find them out and then, and they gaggle with our virtual teletherapy. Among the last two years, thirty-seven referrals, twenty-two students were served. And there might be reasons why, so they can make sure their parents don't respond, that they're reaching out. Did it look away? There are reasons why they're making money to get served. Then our newest provider was Cartwheel. We started in February this past year. And they do virtual therapy, they do psychiatric, that management, all that kind of stuff. Thirty-six referrals since February and forty-three students were served. And I mean, all of these services were provided by them. But it was pretty interesting to see that uptick from Cartwheel and seeing a lot of our referrals on my account were going in the direction of Cartwheel as of the amount of services they, they offer, as well as the parent guidance for our youngest kids, where we can't put them in front of a computer. Yet therapy, the family can benefit if they can handle what's maybe slowing them down. So the rest of this is kind of about Cartwheel. Of those last four, four months, fifty-six referrals, seventy-four percent of them were utilized. Twelve of our counselors or social workers referred, students, all four of them. And the reasons for referrals are listed there for you as well. Some of the things that Andrew mentioned, relationships, family issues, anxiety, trauma is without a definite reason, but then we're, are checking more than one box, self-esteem. And this is across all four of our buildings. And also through Cartwheel, there's a dashboard that our counselors, myself, that you can see the progress. You can see that they're in big schedule, but counseling is now happening. If they've got questions, they can talk to our counselors and we can support them while they're in school. Whether that are happening, especially they're happening during school and after school as well in the evening. It's happening in all four buildings. Our referrals are pretty, pretty evenly split across the board. Our average age of our students getting referred, the bulk of their middle school is the majority of that. So those students have IDPs in five and four, and if they have Medicaid or medical assistance, they are, they're recovered very easily. And this program also just gives the structure that puts forward their insurance. They have insurance, they can cover the service, that, that amount of money in the district. And then obviously you can give that to my church, that therapy only is the majority, but also parent guidance for sixteen percent. Most of those are at the elementary families and some are getting multiple of those. I think Justin asked recently about what is the feedback from students. And at the time, when it was early on, we didn't have feedback from our own students. We had it globally from their, from the organization. But this data is based on Lewisburg students, their questions, if they enjoy meeting with their therapists. Our students, they're asked that question throughout there, and ninety-eight percent, I think that's a pretty impressive measure, as well as if they find it helpful, ninety-seven percent. And then the other one there, a little bit lower, a number of responses when they're asking a little bit less, do they feel accepted? And we're at ninety-one percent. So it feels like it's working. It feels like that this is a great addition to our menu of services in counseling as well. And the opposite kind of gave me this slide too, just how it's tied to our comprehensive plan. We're checking in, I'm looking in with my contact point at Cartwheel, how things are going, I'm kind of checking with our counselors, they're kind of having that collaboration piece. Students that have IDPs are getting service, and the trust of development mentioned that a little bit ago. Students that one more person, potentially we can reach out to and have that connection, it's like their own staff. And I think at the last meeting, I talked about the common form plan, and definitely we're a lead student being referred for trauma. So we're just going to give you that overview of our mental health services and the ideal with the interpretation of the seat. Any questions, no, on Cartwheel or any of your.
Yeah. I was curious about which we do for them. And I'm surprised that we're going to have to buy a whole, particularly for the mental health.
I think a lot of them did also that parent guidance that we offer there too. And so again, putting a kindergarten, first grader isn't feasible, but if that family can get services, we're realizing a concern or an issue. We also opened up at the tail end of the school year on our website, where parents can refer to their own child. They might not want to say it on the phone or have a conversation, but they can put that referral in and they go to our counselors and they can talk together. That was a good add-on. That was a beta product for them and they were testing out, and we finally did that in the end of the year. And we've been having services happening over the summer. I think recently we've got people seeing that on our website, and they're enrolled. Other questions?
Thank you. All right, we have our first item for board action, which is the curriculum resources that we've looked at before. So can I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Dr. Graham, second by Dr. Grant. Any discussion? This is just for resources, so I think we can, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next item is the approval of the enrollment of an LAH student in the program. This does have to spend money, so we're going to vote on this. Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Miss Haines, second by Miss Kraus. Any discussion? Okay, you ready to go?
Okay, Dr. Graham.
Yeah.
Dr. Graham, yes. Miss Haines, yes. Mr. V. Yes.
Mrs. Kraus. Yeah.
Miss Limes.
Yeah.
The next is a, the senior policy that we discussed. Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Dr. Graham, second by Miss Kraus. All right.
Dr. Graham, yeah. Miss Haines, yeah. Mr. V.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Miss Limes, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, our next item is the MOA. So do I hear a motion to approve?
A move.
Moved by Miss Kraus, second by Dr. Graham. And no discussion on this one, so.
Miss Haines, yeah. Mr. V.
Yeah.
Dr. Bronson.
Yes.
Yeah.
Miss Limes, yeah. Dr. Graham.
Yeah.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is the handbooks, which I like as a consolidated version. If you want to describe the difference, because this is.
Yeah, I can pull it up real quick as well. We can show recording.
Take a look at this.
And for the board, and maybe only Joe hasn't voted on this before, but handbooks are like policy, right? They're like a contract to his families and children, so. We've done a lot of work over the years. When I first started on the board, we had to buy extra paper to print handbooks that were out of date the minute that new policy was approved, because we would put policies in them, so.
Yeah, the goal was for it to be more accessible. And this, this landing page is kind of the district pieces of the handbook. So if you scroll down here, you're going to see lots of good information. All of these are, will send you down lower on the page. Click the district calendar, I get right to it. But there's lots of good information. This is in our policy page, but these are suggested policies. These are all linked to our actual policy. Before we just have kind of a, a description of that policy and didn't take them exactly to the policy. So this is a direct link to just policies that we suggest that you read, or maybe you've got a concern or issue, this is a good place to look. Lots of good information. A lot of these are notifications we need to kind of, need to do annually for our families, and it's something that we, some of our plans that we have to get approved. But good information is here for families. Phone numbers at a lot of locations are easily tapped on, on mobile devices to be able to call. And then at the top, you can get to your building-specific handbook. So if you've got multiple kids, you can, you can one-stop shop here. But on all of our building pages, it's linked, it takes you to this page, and then you have to select your building page. And then again, specific to the middle school in this situation, phone numbers that are important, staffing lists, linked email addresses are there for you. Athletics, any topic you want. You can just look at this kind of table of contents at the top and then go right down to it. Speaking of counseling, there is some information on our counseling, policies that are linked directly to our policy page. And pending your approval, we'll take off this banner for tomorrow, so.
This is amazing progress.
Follow you, of course. And then the hands to bring it.
Vince, you don't even know how many emails I think about handbooks. If the principals, we hear some of them will be giggling.
Somewhat it's selfish. I didn't want to, I didn't want to update the district portion on, on four different handbooks, so we wanted to kind of put that collectively together, so that consolidated helps the district office as well. And again, it's easily accessible for families, was, was the end goal.
Thank you. I don't think I did a motion yet, right? Do we hear a motion to approve? Moving Miss Kraus, second by Miss Limes. Okay. Okay, it's a policy in huge ship, so maybe.
Mr. He, yes. Dr. Bonski, yes. Mrs. Kraus, yes. Miss Lyons, yes. Dr. Graham, yes. Dr. Graham.
Yeah.
Miss Haynes, yeah.
Thank you. All right, our next item is the Hempfield Behavioral Health MOU for group counseling sessions. Does anybody want to describe this a little bit?
Yes, I can take that one. Uh, this past year, we did, um, a very similar program called CBITS at our middle school. Um, it's funded, went up on our PCCD grant, um, and we use Hempfield Behavioral Health to do that, which was group trauma-informed counseling. Um, they also have an elementary program, and so Hempfield Behavioral Health reached out to us, uh, last year, uh, as part of a grant application. Uh, the grant is listed there, it's kind of a long substance abuse, education and demand reduction, SATER grant. They were awarded that grant and they can offer, um, elementary, uh, trauma-informed, uh, group counseling in our Kelly and Lintown buildings twice a year for the next two years. So, uh, eight total sessions or groups. Um, a counselor comes in, runs these sessions, um, it's just an added level of service, um, at our elementary, uh, at both of them. Um, and we can also get our counselors to, uh, be aware and get some training on them on how to do this, you know, moving forward, um, for the long term. But this was all grant-funded and it's an agreement, uh, to say this, this is happening.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Miss Kraus, second by Miss Haynes. The MOU, so maybe around the voting.
Dr. Bonski, yes. Mrs. Kraus, yes. Miss Lyons, yes. Dr. Graham, yes. Dr. Graham, yes. Miss Haynes, yes.
Yes.
The next is just to renew everything we already did.
Yeah, so we'll also put this into our PCCD grant, um, we have additional funds remaining there that we can cover one session for the middle school next year.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Dr. Graham, second by Dr. Graham. Any discussion?
I just don't, have we had any feedback from teachers or?
For CBITS?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the counselors at the middle school thought it was a, it was a good, good program. They liked that to have more time in the beginning of the year to get to know the students first, to realize who might need this kind of group counseling. We did one in the fall semester and then the spring semester, so this coming year, we're going to do it more in the middle. Uh, I think it's like a December, we're January to March, um, start date for it. Um, and they thought it was helpful, yeah. Uh, it is, uh, middle of the year, but yeah, it's bringing somebody in to help and, uh, the confidentiality of that group counseling session. Um, but it was a success last year.
Good question, any other questions? Okay.
Okay, Mrs. Kraus.
Yeah.
Miss Lyons.
Yeah.
Dr. Graham.
Yeah.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Miss Haynes.
Yeah.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Dubonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our next item is the cafeteria tables for Lintowns, something like forty years old, right? Something like that. We had talked about this before, but this is the first time we're seeing all the information at the front, do I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Moved by Miss Kraus.
Second.
Second by Dr. Graham. Um, how long are we expected to last?
Hopefully forty more years, uh.
Those dollars to hear that.
I have to check to see the, our warranty information on that, but, uh, a long time, and these are covered out of our group service account.
Right.
They're also a lot easier for custodian staff to move around, the old ones are pretty heavy.
Yeah.
Purly in town.
Purly in town, yeah.
Purly, yeah.
You know, thinking about how many times we've moved the cafeteria in the middle school tables for plays and stuff, those things are monsters. So, good, I'm glad we're later for the Lintown folks to have to move them. Okay. I got a motion there, I think, so we're ready to go?
Dr. Graham.
Yeah.
Dr. Grant.
Yeah.
Miss Haynes.
Yeah.
Mr. He.
Yeah.
Dr. Dubonski.
Who?
Mrs. Kraus.
Yeah.
Miss Lyons.
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Next item for information, we're going to have two foreign exchange students.
Yes, information to share with you. The first is a rising senior who will come for her first semester with us. She hailed from Italy and CET USA is a group we've worked with previously. So we will welcome this student, she has registered, J-1 visa.
Thank you. And next we have the Greenheart, uh, students.
And this is a new agency to work with. This will bring us a rising junior from Poland to stay with us for the full academic year. I'd love for you to share anything more with us about Greenheart. Yeah, thank you.
My name is Megan Morrow and I'm, um, I moved here about two years ago. Um, so I'm a somewhat new resident to Lewisburg, but I'm absolutely making it home. Um, I've been in international education for over ten years at a collegiate level, um, but came on to the Greenheart Exchange Team as a professional. Um, so I'm working to oversee all of our placements of our high school exchange students around the US. And I now have the opportunity to also be a host mom, um, pending your vote on the young woman from Poland. So I'd love to share with you just a, a bit about Greenheart Exchange as we are a unique J-1 high school exchange program with many different international education facets, um, not just high school exchange. So we offer cultural exchange programs that connect high school students. We also bring in interns and trainees, work and travel participants. So if you think about going to Hershey Park or Canobles, um, our organization brings work and travel participants to, um, seasonal opportunities. We also bring in host, uh, we also bring in teachers to work with schools around the US who fill teaching vacancies, um, in a range of different subjects. So we've been around since nineteen eighty-five, we're one of the longest, oldest exchange programs, and we've sponsored over a hundred thousand J-1 high school exchange students. Um, seasonal worker and travel participants, interns and trainees and international teachers. So again, we're in all fifty states and I'm seeing those placements come through daily. Um, our federal deadline is September second to have all of our kids placed, and we know we can do that. And with your help tonight, um, that would be getting one more student here to the US to contribute to the community and, um, to her future goals. So, um, do you have any questions for me about the student or about Greenheart in general? Thank you, I think, thank, thank you so much.
Thank you for attending. Yeah, that's good information to have. Our next up, we have a whole bunch of new, um, curricular information.
Yeah, the list is there, you can review those at your leisure, um, a lot of English, uh, high school English, middle school English are listed there. Um, a lot of them are just, um, we've added standards, um, to all of our maps and they're, they're listed there. So I'll be bringing more of these to you, um, to that new template, um, that have the standards on there. Couple of them had some, uh, changes as well. Personal finance was recently, um, approved, but we added a, a unit there that, um, Mrs. Osborne wanted to add, um, to change that course slightly. Um, and a new teacher, uh, at high school art made some adjustments to, uh, those art courses that are listed there.
Moving on. All right. Tuition students, this is, we've heard about.
Policy two oh two says, I simply am for you. Uh, we have a number of families who have reached Kyle in the business office and our children will be attending on tuition basis.
Thank you. And then Adam Transportation Management.
Yep. Uh, so as part of a small reorganization of some roles and responsibilities, we're looking to hand off, um, the daily transportation management piece to Adam. Recently added some additional duties, uh, to Mr. Jones's position. Um, and as time goes on, these other positions, you know, accumulate more, uh, more and more time. And, um, so as part of that, uh, change, uh, we would have Adam handle the, the, the daily management and Mr. Jones would still be the, um, the overseeing transportation. He'd be the transportation liaison to the school district. Um, and we would still have oversight of the, um, important, uh, decisions that need to be made, obviously. And then, um, they would take the daily tasks that include things like, uh, route changes, um, all the route building, um, for the beginning of the year and things like, uh, Kelly kickoff and, um, ESY and also, um, all the daily, uh, management of calls and everything that's associated with the daily management and the, um, route changes for special education. I think I said that twice, but sorry. And the alternate, uh, route change, uh, requests. So this also streamlined, um, some current processes where Michael's basically just like being, acting as a middleman where he's getting the information from a parent or the school and passing it on to Adam. Uh, so it helps streamline some things as well. We associate costs, it's about three thousand, just over three thousand, uh, a month or forty thousand a year to hand that off, um, which I think is, is a good price. We're actually paying less than what, uh, Midwest is currently paying for the services. It, this year would be a, a budget neutral position because we have, uh, we organized some routes where we've taken off some vans and, uh, vans are about forty thousand each, so we've recovered a lot of that cost for this year. Uh, going forward, I think, you know, they would be able to continue, um, continue to keep these routes, um, streamlined or I'm, I'm sorry.
Optimized.
Optimize, yep, and reduce that cost, so we would see some savings from that as well. Um, but Mr. Jones joined us to answer any specific questions you might have to what those changes would look like and any other questions I might go and answer.
Anyone have any questions? Do you find it exciting that your position description changes annually? I hope that.
It's yearly, it keeps it exciting.
Yes, um, yeah. Yay for fresh.
I was just going to ask, do we foresee potentially any trouble if like, if parents are having problems? Would they, would there be pushback about reaching straight out to Adam instead of the school district?
It would still be calling our number, um, but one of our, I think it's number eight, will go to them instead.
Okay.
I think it's eight in the tree, right?
Okay.
We have a call tree and we can actually have it, or, or as soon as you hit that, it goes right out to their line.
Okay.
Seems like you're calling, like they're in house with us. You won't see any, any difference from there.
Okay.
They call the school as normal.
Okay.
It's also better than calling, and I think I'll have to call that, or that person has to make us on call.
To that person, right.
Different question, no.
And this is, I think, I may be wrong, but I vaguely remember when we went with Adam, this was one of the hopes.
Yes.
That down the road, this would be something that they could afford as well.
Yeah. Our next. We're doing it now. Yeah, keeping it fresh.
Yeah, the contract, uh, language talks about twenty-four months as an initial period. Um, but right now, uh, our solicitor's reviewing the contract and so it's, the one we have attached isn't, isn't final, but that's something that I could, I could review with him as well.
Do you have strong feelings about it being twelve months versus twenty-four?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Is it, I just can't remember, is it, um?
Um, would the twenty-four months put it in line with the contract we already have with Adams? Is that why it's twenty-four months?
No, the current contract goes to twenty thirty.
Okay.
Right, because we had to give them a longer contract to make it worth it for them to buy the vehicles?
Yeah, 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 I remember now.
Um, Board President's Report. I could say this during, uh, Director's comments, but I did want to say, so I've been at the school a lot this summer and schools don't close at all. It's just, something is going on all the time. There were a million projects going on, feels like at every building.
Yep.
There were practices non-stop, the athletics folks were available all the time and wonderful about it. I feel like everyone is on borrowed and volunteer time, and I just want to say this. I think all the boards do it because, you know, you go for walks or you drive by or you're involved in music or athletics or whatever. And also because convocation is coming up and I just signed an incredible number of certificates for very long-serving employees. The fact that we have people here for so long, willing to do so much is just incredible. And we will say at the end of the summer, how grateful we are for all the staff that get everything together and facilities and everything is looking wonderful. And I really have to give a shout out to everyone who is on a very small, extra compensatory stipend, but is not at all calling within the summer. So kudos to everyone out and about. I'll hand it off to you.
All right, my report tonight has three pieces. The first I wanted to mention overlaps errands. Vince and I on Monday of this week walked through four buildings. Projects, cleaning, repair, we are ready. Things look good. It's time to bring everyone back to school. The second piece is at your place. We're always tracking our enrollment. We answered the perennial question, how big is kindergarten? This was printed earlier this week. Today it stands at one twenty-eight K, an average usual class size in the district. I also invite you to look at the spreadsheet. We always are interested, how many are choosing Sun Tech? And you see our number there, they started school this week. Wednesday was Sun Tech, first day, twenty-seven. Nineteen rising seniors are choosing the Bloomsburg opportunity for early college. And I point that out and I share with you across the four buildings. Sixty-five new students have enrolled in the district. It will be a great start. The third piece in front is something new. Take a look at the school profile for our high school. This is new to our high school webpage. If you take a look at the numbers, the information, the awareness of what our students are enrolling in, how well they're performing in their coursework, where they're headed upon graduation. This is a great piece of information to share with our community, our parents and all who may choose to access this. I want to be sure to point out our high school counselor, Jen Sands, prepared and compiled this piece.
Thank you. I want to remind anyone new to the board who hasn't seen this before, but Kathy always tells us that there are some parents from other states who don't realize that they have to be in kindergarten until after Labor Day and then they show up, which is the shape of between August and the end of the year.
They'll be. Next.
Right. All right, where are we? Um, any board leads on any committee reports, policy, uh, Jordan would be present, CSIU, no? Any board based on committee reports, policy, Jordan would be present, CSI U, no. Any others? GF has a man we meet twice. Once this. This coming weekend, Monday, Monday. Plenty of meetings to report about next time. Next, we're on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve with the revised personnel report? Move by Miss Haynos, second by Ms. Lyons. All right, we'll move. The vocal.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Miss Haynos.
Yeah.
Mr. He.
Yeah.
Dr. Jabonski.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kraus.
Yeah.
Miss Lyons.
Yeah.
Dr. Graham.
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items? Virtual or otherwise? Okay. Director's comments? Do you want to get started?
Sure. I just wanted to move. So as a first and I actually. Back that up a little bit. Sorry. Anyway, I just wanted to add a thank you as well to Miss Sands and and Mr. Gradwell. So this, I I'm currently going through the roller coaster of a senior in high school applying to colleges. And this was something that I I was already in the works, but I had asked them about back in May. And shared some examples of many other Pennsylvania school districts that have this kind of one pager or two pager. Out there on their website. So I take no credit, but I'm just happy to see it come to fruition. And I know this this was a lot of work. I know a lot of this information still does get sent to colleges through the Naviance portal, but that's like a closed pipeline that we don't get to see. And so the fact that our that parents can see this. Community members can see this, but also honestly, college admissions counselors who maybe aren't, you know, don't have their Naviance open, but they want to look at. A school that the kid is applying from that context is incredibly important. So to actually be able to support everybody to see this is just huge. And and I think we are, yeah, we should. Be very grateful to Miss Sands and and the whole staff for getting with them. Otherwise, yeah, my kids have started running cross country already. So things are. Off and running, I know. Looking forward to the beginning of school and thanks to everybody.
I I was gonna say the same thing. This is very cool. I've never seen some like this before. The only other thing I have, I'm going back a little bit because it's summer meetings. We haven't a lot and I wasn't here in July. But I did want to say about Mr. Jones here. So we were able to go down to Harrisburg. Um, to advocate for free school lunches and. I just really want to give a kudos to Mr. Jones because I did not know somebody could be so passionate about school lunches. And I think that's fantastic. Um, but just so people know, there was an advocacy event down there. We did try to meet with some legislators. I wasn't in office, but we left some information for them. But I did think the information put out by Snappa was really interesting, just about the nationwide trends of. Free school lunches and really voicing how much it is a nonpartisan issue, which I think is really important and how a lot of southern states. Have been led by certain parties and here has been led by certain parties. So just it's a nonpartisan issue and it's something that just people have seen as the importance of. Children not being hungry if they need to learn. And from my education, because I'm not always up on school code, is that. We're kind of guaranteed the breakfast. Am I right with this? Because that's in school code. And what we're looking for now is to get it qualified in school code for the lunches so that it's not a continuous every year for the budget. So that's kind of what was being looked on. And I know in our district, it's an odd district. We talk about it all the time, but. I know we've had people come in and talk about how. You know, kids can't control where they're getting food. So there tends to be a high. Higher rate than you would think with children because they don't have control of being able to go grocery shopping and get their foods and that kind of stuff. But it was a nice event. We got stuff out to our legislators, but also a huge kudos to Mr. Jones for having planned on going down there, helping with it and just being. So much of an advocate for our students.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's exciting to hear a new school year. So yeah, just I mean, all the good vibes, all the teachers. I remember I was a teacher. Exciting, stressful time. And also I was just really excited to see all. The information today about mental health supports for students, where you see in the news so much about the mental health crisis among. Our young folk. And so I think it's great that we're doing such good work, working toward that. And there's community stuff going on too.
Yeah, I would consider that actually. At our CSIB Professional Development Day, we had a speaker. We talked, I think he was also a clinical psychologist. In a high school setting for his entire career. And he spoke a lot about. How to be available to kids. And I mean, with the crisis being what it is, Dr. Faulkner described it very well. We don't really have all the answers, but I'm grateful that we're on it. You know, we've met with a bunch of writers. They seem to be vetted, a couple that are involved for us. We're having conversations with people. People will really want to step in.
Yeah, Dino as well. I think I'm excited about what Dr. Faulkner is presenting. Posing what he thinks he's able to do. The it's a huge piece to, as he said, have someone who. Knows the clinical side, but also knows the educational side because. There are kind of two sides that don't necessarily speak well together. Just because they have different terms and different understanding of things. So that that. Is a is a big missing piece and that's great. That he is clearly so passionate about it and hopefully we'll have good results with it. I was at kindergarten grill out last night. And then I was at new teacher induction this morning and it's just so nice to see. So many people so excited for next Thursday. And both were very well attended. The kindergarten grill out, it is impressive every year. Just how Green Dragon Foundation gets. All everybody through, everybody fed, everybody's happy. And I'm on the playground to play in just a matter of. Half an hour, forty-five minutes. So it is a well-oiled machine. But it was a lot of fun. And again, we're just excited for next Thursday. Keep it in my house.
I don't have any.
Thank you. I said my part, Ben. Did you have anything you wanted to remind us of?
Uh, yeah, convocation on Monday, teachers coming back. Excited about them all coming back and being in the schools and starting school on Thursday.
Any last words?
Good.
Okay, I will take a motion to adjourn. Move by Dr. Graham, second by Dr. Graham. Hold on, favor say aye. Aye. Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you again.